This regular meeting of council on August the 18th to order. The municipality of Central Elgin acknowledges that it is located on the land of the McKee Treaty that was signed by the Weyandot and the Anasnabi nations, including ancestors of the Chipwas of the Thames First Nation. It is also the traditional territory of the Hutnisoni, the Atawandran, or neutrals, and the Mississauga Nation. These first nations continue to provide ongoing stewardship of the land and waters in the municipality of Central Elgin. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, before we go into any of the business, I would like to acknowledge that Rob Davie from our roads department recently received an associate road supervisor's certificate from the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors, and we'd like to congratulate Rob for that and acknowledge this achievement. Well done, Rob. You had option of the minutes. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the minutes of the special means of council dated July the 4th, July 13th, and July 20th, and the regular meaning of council dated July 19th, 2022 be adopted.
Are there any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Correspondence requiring action. We have one from the Port Stanley BIA, a boundary adjustment request. Do you have the motion?
I do, Madam Mayor. Motion reads, moved by councillor Cravitt, seconded by councillor Row, that report sorry, that report, report Stanley BIA Board of Management proposed BIA boundary adjustment be received as information, and that council approve in principle the BIA boundary adjustment as proposed by the BIA Board of Management, and that staff be directed to proceed with notice to the Port Stanley BIA general membership in accordance with Municipal Act 2001.
Thank you. I have a question. I don't know if others do. I was intrigued that the whole berm is included when we're not planning to have commercial development on 70% of it. So I just wasn't exactly certain why it would include the whole berm in this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For ease of mapping and to comply with the risk assessment requirements, the lower level of any development is likely going to have to entail commercial. And instead of trying to guess exactly where those lines are, the entirety of both those areas have been included to encapsulate that. And I believe councillor Row could add any further information if required.
Yeah, I guess I would just add, if you look at the broader map for the rest of the area, there are residential homes included in within that boundary. There's different levels of zoning in there as well. So it is recognized that it would only be the commercial portion within that extended boundary.
Thank you. No, I was just curious as to the outline of the boundary. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we've got two items for information of correspondence. Does anyone have any questions or concerns or thoughts on those? If not, I will ask Diane to read the motion, please.
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Row, that correspondence items number one and number two be received as information and filed.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we're going to the Central Elgin Planning Office. We have a fair number of items here. The first one is to deal with 96 Coulter Ave. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Cravitt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that reports CEP 3522 re consent application 96 Coulter Ave, Michael DeLebacke be received for information, and that council has no objections to consent application E6322 96 Coulter Ave, Michael DeLebacke, subject to the following recommended conditions. The applicant enters into an agreement with the municipality of Central Elgin to address administrative, technical, and financial matters relative to the development of the subject lands, the payment of cash and move the dedication of 5% of the land for Parkland purposes, a drainage reassessment be done if necessary at the owner's expense, and a copy of the reference plan be provided to the municipality of Central Elgin.
Does anyone have any questions concerning this? Seeing and hearing none, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now going to the second application, which is draft plan of subdivision approval for Eagle Ridge, Phase Two.
The resolution reads, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that reports CEP 3722. Okay. Okay, I'll just start that again. The main motion reads that report CEP 3722 reapplication for draft plan of subdivision approval Eagle Ridge Phase Two, 2561603 Ontario Limited be received, and that council support in principle the proposed draft plan of subdivision file number 34TE CE 2202 on lands owned by 2561603 Ontario Limited, which lands may be legally described as all of Block 74, part of Block 75, Plan 11M242 in the municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54406 as amended.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning this one? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Would you read the motion for the application, another one, to deal with Eagle Ridge, Phase Two?
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Cravitt, seconded by councillor Row, that reports CEP 3822 reapplications to amend the municipality of Central Elgin official plan and the township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw 1998 Eagle Ridge Phase Two, 2561603 Ontario Limited be received, and the direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendments to the municipality of Central Elgin official plan and the township of Yarmouth zoning bylaw for the proposed residential uses as part of the proposed draft plan of subdivision file number 34TE CE 2202 on lands which may legally be described as all of Block 74, part of Block 75, Plan 11M242 in the municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulations 54306 and 54506 as amended.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions concerning this aspect? Seeing none, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, one that I think is a great accomplishment, and I'm really looking forward to this one. And I, this is our Elgin, Central Elgin Five Year Official Plan Update, with the highlights in which we've been working on for quite a long time. It's more than five years, I'll tell you, since the original plan was adopted. I was on the committee. So Diane, would you read the motion first, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Cravitt, that reports CEP 4022 re Central Elgin Five Year Official Plan Update be received, and that council approved the bylaw to adopt an official plan for the corporation of the municipality of Central Elgin that is on the August 18th, 2022 council agenda.
Thank you. Now, questions, comments?
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Just a comment, Madam Mayor, I agree with you. It's a lot of work, but it's I fully support this and commend staff. It's job well done.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Certainly, I'm happy to see this accomplished so then we can move on to getting the zoning bylaws amalgamated and put in place as well. Just call the vote then, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Happily, yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now we're looking at a draft plan of subdivision approval for Canterbury Place Extension on Carwood, Ontario Limited. Do you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that reports CEP 22 reapplication for draft plan of subdivision approval Canterbury Place Extension, Carwood, Ontario Limited be received, and that council support in principle the proposed draft plan of subdivision file number 34TE CE 2201 on lands owned by Carwood, Ontario Limited, which lands may be legally described as Part III and VII, Plan 11R9106 of Lot 32, Unregistered Plan 231 in the municipality of Central Elgin, and that further that a date for a public meeting be scheduled in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54406 as amended.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks, sorry.
I was just gonna say, that's just opposite the soccer fields. So if anyone wants to see it, they go down and see the Stanley Cup come from Belmont. Go over, take a look.
It's a very logical extension to the subdivision in that area. Would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. And now we're looking to amend the Village of Belmont zoning by law 9121, which is concerning this Canterbury Place Extension. Do you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Cravitt, seconded by councillor Row, that reports CEP 4222 reapplication to amend the Village of Belmont zoning by law 9121 Canterbury Place Extension, Carwood, Ontario Limited be received, and that direction be given by council to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the zoning bylaw to support the proposed residential development associated with the draft plan of subdivision file number 34TE CE 2201 on lands which lands may be legally described as Part III and VII, Plan 11R9106 of Lot 32, Unregistered Plan 231 in the municipality of Central Elgin, and further that a date for a public meeting be established in accordance with Ontario Regulation 54506 as amended.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we're going to the Chief Administrative Officers' reports, and the first one is the Joint Elgin Compliance Audit Committee, to check on finances through the election. Read the motion, please.
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Cravitt, that reports CAO 2722 re Joint Elgin Compliance Audit Committee, 2022 appointments be received for information, and that council approved the appointment of Christine Scrimger, Andrew Wright, Daniel Ross, and Dr Zachary Spicer to sit on the Joint Elgin Compliance Audit Committee for the term of, for the 2022, 2026 term of council, and that staff be directed to bring forward an appointment by law for council consideration.
Any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the report on the traditional land acknowledgement statement and how we have changed it and why. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that reports CAO 2822 re traditional land acknowledgement statement be received for information.
Does anyone have any questions on the changes? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
No, no questions. Actually, fully supportive. But we had a moment down at Good Roads, or A-M-O, I should say, in the bear pit. A gentleman spoke. And spoke very, very well. And he was a band member, and it, you know, 2,000 delegates are all crammed in. When he was done, we give him a thunderous ovation. He was urging us to, you know, we need to work together. It was a moment that a lot of us remember. Very good. And actually, I run into him all the way after and shook his hand. The healing needs to start. And this is very, very, very smart, small part in it, but that's a young man that breaks my mind.
Very good. Any other comments? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, the Director of Infrastructure and Community Services report on Elm Line and Centennial Road sanitary servicing. Would you read the motion, please?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by, sorry, moved by councillor Cravitt, seconded by councillor Row, that report ICS 2222 re Elm Line and Centennial Road sanitary servicing be received for information, and that a sanitary force main stub be extended into the North Boulevard on Elm Line of the intersection with Elm Line for future sanitary servicing at an estimated cost of $30,000.
Any questions about this one? This makes sense as far as I'm concerned. Would you go ahead and call the vote then? I'm sorry, did you want to speak?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think it's good planning and doing this at this point while the construction's happening.
Yeah. Thank you. Go ahead.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook? Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, the Director of Fire Rescue Services, Fire Chief, the monthly alarm activities report. Does anyone have any questions concerning the monthly alarm activities report?
So?
Yes.
Any indication of why it's up so much in 2022 for the month of July? It's almost doubled the cost.
Mr Armored, would you like to respond to that?
The Beach Patrol primarily is, we've seen a doubling in the numbers for Beach Patrol councillor Cravitts, and the suspicion is the beach lifeguards are saying that the numbers of patrons down at the beach are pretty much to an unprecedented number of what they've seen in the past. We suspect that a lot is due to the relaxation of the COVID rules. People are now getting out. One of the other components we have noticed is we have experienced some rougher weather this season on a few days, which more patrons are finding themselves caught in rip currents and stuff, so the Beach Patrol is having to go in to rescue. We also have seen an increase in numbers for the Port Stanley Station as well, and some of that also is medical calls relating to some of the beach patrons. But again, as the municipality grows, those numbers will see an increase as well. But you are correct. July did take a significant increase, and we are up slightly overall for the half of the season. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. The relaxing of the COVID restrictions is contributing as well. So thank you.
Yes, the beach has certainly been very crowded. Any other questions or concerns? If not, would you read the motion?
Certainly. The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Cravitt, that report FS0922 re monthly alarm activities report, July of 2022 be received for information.
Thank you. Would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
It was nice to give you a chance to have something to say, Mr Armored. You always attend and don't have much, not, not, you haven't had to answer many questions. Thank you. Now, we're going to the Director of Asset Management and Development Services, and the first one is the monthly building report. Would you read the motion first, I guess, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that report AMDS 2122 re July 2022 monthly building report be received for information.
Does anyone have any questions on the report or comments? Seeing and hearing none, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we're looking at the monthly bylaw report. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Cravitt, seconded by councillor Row, that report AMDS 2222 re July 2022 monthly building bylaw report be received for information.
Thank you. Questions? Mr Perrin, have we received, like, is there a large increase in the traffic? I see there's quite a few parking fines. Is that due to our new regulations, or is that in line with what we've had in the past?
Through you, Madam Chair, no, there is increased ticketing just because of the paid parking being implemented in other lots, as well as the time limits that are on the, on the, on street parking as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. Now, we're going to the bylaws, and I see we have the two drain ones which are, they'll be in the first and second reading, but not in the third reading. So does there any bylaw there that anyone needs taken out and done separately? Deputy Mayor Marks?
I'd like to see the official plan just on its own, hoping it'll be unanimous, so it doesn't get blurred.
Bylaw number five, or sorry, bylaw number 2732?
Rest or fine, just together.
I have a second there.
Yeah, that was moved by Deputy Mayor Marks. We have a second for that. Councillor Row?
On the third reading of?
On the third reading. We would like to move the third reading of that. Our councillor Row and Deputy Mayor Marks, again, you can just reverse.
Look up from the main motion.
Yes. Would you read the main motion then?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Cravitt, that bylaws 2726, 2727, 2730, 2731, 2733, and 2734 be read a first and a second time.
Any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the third reading on, or the final reading on all but those last two, yes?
The motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaws 2726, 2727, 2730, and 2731 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote, please?
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The resolution carries?
Thank you. And now the separate bylaw?
Motion reads, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by councillor Row, that bylaw 2732 be read a first and a second time.
Any comments? This is one to celebrate for certain. That's right. Call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Unanimous.
Call the second motion on that bylaw, please?
The motion reads, moved by councillor Row, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that bylaw 2732 be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote, please.
Councillor Row?
Yes.
Councillor Cravitt?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Again, unanimous?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have no public notice, notice of motions. Does anyone have any other business that they want brought forward at this time? Councillor Row?
I have a question. That's acceptable.
Certainly.
I've just been hearing and reading and seeing different things about the Highway Three extension that is out there somewhere, and one of the comments was that council would be invited to whatever meetings that are going on. I just haven't heard anything about that. So is that coming up? Or what is the status of that? Do we know?
Does anyone know?
The county. They re, oh, sorry, they reintroduced the Highway Three corridor. Is that where, yeah, that was out of county. I'm not privy to.
Right. The line in the paper mentioned that councils would be invited to that, I guess. So are we?
To you, Madam Mayor, not really sure. I know that the county council agenda had that the Highway Three corridor was removed from the Central Elgin employment lands, but beyond that, I'm not really aware of any extension or anything at this point in time.
So if I may, just then, is it something that's relevant to Central Elgin that should be pursued, or?
Well, you see, originally, Elmer and Malahide were canceled, but at that time, Central Elgin's, the province had, of course, set these aside and had options on this to have this bypass. And it was petitioned to remove it. I know Mr Urick, when he was member, wanted it removed. And so they removed it from Elmer and Malahide, but they didn't remove it from Central Elgin. And suddenly, it's come through that it is removed from Central Elgin, but we were not, we weren't notified or anything. It just, it says that in April, they removed it, but Central Elgin hadn't even been notified it was removed. Is that not correct, Mr?
I'm actually confused, because I thought for some reason the province was reinstating it, and then our employment lands would be hampered by access if that happened.
Staff, to you, Madam Mayor, staff have not been advised of that. Mr Brooks, do you have any comment on that? Because I'm not aware of it.
Me neither.
I know I'm not aware of any new news in regards to the bypass.
It's in the paper.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Marks.
Some that seemed fairly simple at the start, it's really become complicated. Last year, the county had a delegation with Minister Carolyn Mulrooney to discuss this. And since then, you know, it's really got muddled. And no communication from the county did not reach Central Elgin. And it's something that we were, thought we were celebrating, and like you said, it's got murky. Some days, I don't even know what's going on. I complained quite bitterly there at one of the council meetings. You know, that's long been land we want to develop north of the Comfort Inn. Then all of a sudden, we want access, and we go all the way down to Yarmouth Centre, which was a pretty huge hinder. So I, then there was talk, yeah, you take it off, and if any, any of the roads need to be fixed, it's sort of, go ahead and fix it, but you're gonna pay for it. So I don't know. It's murky.
Staff will follow up and
Thank you.
Report back to council in an email.
Yes, because it doesn't, to me, in many ways, it doesn't, I didn't understand it when they first took it off Elmer, because it was, the bypass was to be extended. So it went, you know, around Elmer, and not, the trucking, et cetera, would be going around Elmer and not through. And it was that this option left. But then they, they all wanted it canceled, because of course, Elmer wants to expand their industrial section out that way. And Malahide didn't want it either. And Central Elgin, we had said, they were, the county were originally going to do a big study on it and get back to us on to whether it was needed still or not. And that study was never completed. So it is very confusing, certainly. And I appreciate it, Mr Shipway, if you would get back to us. Any other, yes, go ahead, Deputy Mayor. I'm sorry, councillor Cravitt?
Just a lighter note, the Just a lighter note, the Port Stanley Fish Fry was a success back on July thirtieth, and we haven't met in council since then, so I just want to congratulate the Fire Fighters Association on their open, the opening of the fire, with the opening of the fire hall, that public was able to see the fire hall as well.
Good. That's great, and, and I appreciate the, the video we did as well. I mean, it, it does give a good background for people to see, and I'm, I did send my regrets through Mr. Armrod, because with my surgery, there was no way I could gotten out to the fish fry. I wasn't walking much at all at that point. Okay. No other business, then we need a motion to move into close. Would you read the motion, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Cravitz, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that council proceed into closed session at one-thirty-seven P M in order to address a matter pertaining to a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiation carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local board, see Medical Center.
Thank you. Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
That we're live.
We're live?
We're live. Well, that's not.
No, that isn't. Thank you. Would you read the motion to come out of close, please?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Cravitz, that council adjourn from closed session and return to open session at one-forty-four P M.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
The carries?
Thank you. Motion from?
Closed session, yeah. Moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that closed session item number two be received as information, and the staff proceed as directed by council.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And that's the only motion from closed, correct? And so we now need the confirmatory bylaw motion?
Motion reads, moved by Counselor Cravitz, seconded by Counselor Rowe, that bylaw twenty-seven twenty-eight be read a first and a second time.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.
Last motion on the bylaw, moved by Deputy Mayor Marks, seconded by Counselor Cravitz, that bylaw twenty-seven twenty-eight be read a third time and finally passed.
Call the vote.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz? Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you. And the final motion?
Motion reads, Madam Mayor, moved by Counselor Rowe, seconded by Deputy Mayor Marks, that the regular planning meeting of council dated Thursday, August the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two be adjourned at one-forty-six P M, and the next regular meeting of council be scheduled for Monday, September the twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, at seven P M.
Call the vote, please.
Counselor Rowe?
Yes.
Counselor Cravitz?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Marks?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Resolution carries?
Thank you.